Welcome this morning. Welcome, Your Honor.
Great, thank you all for being here. I will go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is July tenth, twenty twenty four at ten AM. We have three items on the agenda today, starting with number R U E twenty four zero 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 six. A request for approval of a reasonable use exception, or RUU for short, to allow for the development of a single-family residence and access driveway that would impact a category four wetland and its associated buffer on an approximately point one eight acre property located at four four nine South Bel Air Loop Southwest. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Lamina Law, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a reasonable use exception. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, wetland report and mitigation plan prepared by Beaver Creek Environmental Services, a letter of permission from the US Army Corps of Engineers regarding the proposed fill of wetland and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record? Please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing, along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision, would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying today. I am not trying to trip anyone up. I am just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal so that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we will be following today, is first we will hear from city staff who will provide an overview of the proposal, along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant and see if there's any additional information and they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And finally, following public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. So I think with that, we can get started. And Mr. Reed, are you presenting on this first matter today?
I am.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and get you sworn in. If you can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please go ahead and spell your name for the recording and explain your role at the city?
Sure. My name is Marshall Reed. First name M A R S H A L L, last name Reed, R E A D. And I serve as the lead planner and shoreline administrator for the City of Ocean Shores and will be presenting the staff report for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I would review in advance of this hearing?
It did.
Great. So you can go ahead and begin your presentation whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. So this is a reasonable use exception request for the Saquera project. Reasonable use twenty four zero 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 six, submitted April twentieth, twenty twenty three, and then the report date of June twenty four, twenty twenty four. This application is for a reasonable use exception to authorize impacts to a wetland buffer and wetland for a single-family residence in an R one zone. The applicant Sheldon and Monterio Saquera, I'm sorry if I didn't get your last name perfect. The project description is Saquera, R U E twenty four zero 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 six, located on parcel number zero nine three nine zero zero seven zero three three zero zero. Division block and lot is nineteen, block seven, lot thirty three, located at four four nine South Bel Air Loop Southwest in Ocean Shores, Washington. This is a seventy nine hundred square foot lot. We are seeking, or the applicant is seeking authorization to impact one hundred and fifteen square feet of category four wetland and four thousand three hundred and thirty seven square feet of impact to that buffer. There are eight hundred, or excuse me, eight thousand five hundred and eighty eight square feet of indirect wetland impacts associated with the project. The existing conditions, the zoning is R one, the land use is single-family, and there is no shoreline jurisdiction associated with the project. The surrounding conditions of this parcel, zoning to the north, south, east, and west are all R one, single-family zoned parcels. The land use designation from the City of Ocean Shores Comprehensive Plan to the north, south, east, and west are all designated as single-family. The existing land use to the north, south, east, and west are undeveloped properties at this point. Background, the subject property addressed at four four nine South Bel Air Loop Southwest is located in the southwest corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting street is roughly four hundred feet south, excuse me, northwest at Spinnaker Street Southwest. The property is zoned R one, single-family zoning. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R one, and impacting the lot for a single-family dwelling is a permitted use in this district. Notice was sent out for this R U E hearing scheduled for July tenth today at ten o'clock to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty two oh ninety. The hearing information was also made available on the City of Ocean Shores website. And then notice was published in the Daily World newspapers on June twenty fifth and twenty seventh. Additions. Staff analysis determined that this proposed development project is listed as a permitted use in the, as defined in the Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty. Wetland and associated buffers exist on the parcel and the surrounding parcels, which require approval of a reasonable use exception to impact any of these wetlands or its associated buffers. The purpose of the RUU is to allow use of the parcel that would be allowed and is in all respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city, provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impact to any wetland areas or its associated buffers are applied. And the applicant demonstrates that the project has been approved under all federal, state regulatory programs applicable to the project. Any impacts to the wetland or wetland buffers must be compensated for through mitigation measures where onsite or off-site mitigation is infeasible, compensatory mitigation may be authorized pursuant to Ocean Shores Municipal Code title nineteen oh two one fifty B. Standard of review, the process to obtain a reasonable use exception shall be the same process and criteria applicable to a conditional use permit. In seventeen fifty two oh fifty, the criteria for consideration of a conditional use permit, before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the following. The use applied for is either listed in the conditional uses or allowed in the district or that it is significantly similar to one or more of the listed uses. Approval of the permit would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and would not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. And also that the granting of the permit would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. Also, no nuisance to life limb or property would develop as a result of the proposal. In the code analysis, this project would be allowed in an R one zone per Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen oh twenty. Permitted uses as follows, under paragraph A, single-family residences. The development would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and would not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. This district is intended for low-density detached, single-family dwellings in order to assure the maximum of light, air, open space, privacy, and the protection of property values. Other uses should only be allowed if they're compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest. Where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of this district. A, the proposed site plan will conform to all city standards, and approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. And B, there would be no indication that allowing the single-family residents in this zone would create any nuisance to life limb or property. The summary of the criteria, relevant to code nineteen oh two oh ninety, wetland delineation and protection. The Ocean Shores Municipal Code nineteen oh two oh ninety outlines five possible criteria to regulate development activities in wetlands or their associated buffers. Only numbers one and three would apply to this proposal. The hearing examiner, after reviewing pursuant to section nineteen oh two one fifty, finds that A, no practical alternative exists for design, development, and/or use of the property in a manner that would not encroach on the wetland or buffer and that the prohibition would preclude the use of the property that would be otherwise legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on the character and circumstances of the property. And that the project has incorporated measures to provide for compliance with subsection D of the section. And number three, the proposed development is within the original platted area and the use specified in the original plan of the Ocean Shores community, as evidenced by the covenants, conditions, and restrictions attached to the property by the developer on first sale of the lots and in all respects otherwise is in accordance with the requirements of all applicable development regulations of the city, provided that all reasonable measures to avoid and minimize impact to any wetland or areas or associated buffers are applied. And the applicant demonstrates the project has been approved under all federal and state regulatory programs applicable to the project. The Saquera project is located in the R one zoning districts, in the R one zoning district where a single-family residence is designated as a permitted use and would be legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on the conditions of the parcel. The typical, typical, single-family residential site design in Ocean Shores utilizes the majority of the parcel for the structure, parking, and custom landscaping. This in addition to the area required to construct the home. As this typical design would encroach into the delineated buffer of the Saquera project, the project was designed to minimize these impacts. The wetland associated with this project are located onsite and offsite, but direct impacts have been minimized as well as impacts to the buffer. The applicant has also set aside portions of the parcel as natural areas in addition to the standard structural setbacks, and this will provide buffer to protect the wetland. Areas of this proposal that would typically be developed as yards or landscaping will be maintained as functional buffer. This demonstrates the second priority of wetland development, which is minimization. Section D requires that only the minimum necessary to achieve the purpose shall be allowed and that any impacts that are authorized must be mitigated in accordance with the best available science applicable to the situation and setting. The project proposes to use the city's weather wax wetland mitigation bank to compensate for all impacts that may be necessary and authorized to make reasonable use of the parcel. The third criteria to allow impacts to either a wetland or buffer is this mitigation of impacts. The process involves the purchase of credits in the bank that are available to compensate for impacts to a wetland or buffer that are authorized. The City of Ocean Shores typically uses a one-one ratio for impacts to buffer unless best scientific information would recommend otherwise. Due to the limit, due to the limited size of parcels in Ocean Shores, onsite mitigation is determined to be impractical in most cases, so compensatory mitigation is the method most commonly used to mitigate impacts that are unavoidable. In addition to the mitigation measures that are conditioned on this proposal, there is also a long-term protective measure consisting of delineation fencing with signage. Currently, the city is requiring the proposal to include two-rail fencing with critical area signs located at intervals that would provide notice and protection of the unmitigated portion of the buffer and wetland. Based on individual site conditions, the city may allow posts only in certain areas to maintain an open look and feel to the development and based based on research into available materials, the city has determined that fence posts or delineation posts should be placed at no greater than ten-foot intervals. Delineation fencing that is required to bisect a parcel shall be required to have the two-rail fence with a minimum of one critical area sign facing towards the mitigated or developed portion of the parcel. And each run or section of isolated delineated area shall have at least one sign placed as previously outlined. The city may opt to modify these approved methods of long-term protection if site conditions or level of compliance dictate. These methods are provided the minimum level of protection and would not preclude an owner from implementing more restrictive fencing if required for security or pet containment. The recommendation, should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning department recommends conditionals as listed in addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. The construction of the project must meet all current planning, zoning, building construction, and fire code requirements. And that the applicant must craft and execute a wetland or buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to wetland buffer or wetland. And the plan shall include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during and after construction activities are complete. And that will conclude the staff report for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I do have some questions for you, but with these kind of projects, I think it's often helpful to have the applicant's expert available to provide clarification. So I do see that Mr. Heckard is here. Perhaps we can go ahead and get you sworn in. And you're on mute. You may have to unmute yourself, Mr. Heckard.
Yes.
Good morning. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and spell your name and explain your role with this project?
My name is Mark Heckert, M A R K H E C K E R T. I'm a biologist with Beaver Creek Environmental Services out of Puyallup, Washington.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to direct my questions to Mr. Reed, but please feel free to chime in if you have any clarification or additional information. So, Mr. Reed, for the record, did the city determine that this proposal is exempt from CEPA review as minor new construction?
Yeah, it did.
And then, so it appears from the wetland report that there is a category four wetland that's located on and off-site with a standard fifty-foot buffer that covers the entire parcel. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And then, let me just see here. So any development on this property would be, would not be possible absent a RUU to allow for impact to the wetland and buffer?
Yes, that's also correct.
Great. And then I'm looking at what I have as page eighteen in my packet. It's a looks like a little diagram that shows the wetland and the buffer areas. It appears that the wetland extends across the entire frontage of this parcel. So, you know, to allow any access to this property would require some, some fill, and I believe that's what's proposed here.
Yes, that, that fill and that encroachment is what required the wetland fill permit from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Great. Mr. Heckard, it looks like you had some comments on that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sorter, just to clarify a little bit too, part of the avoidance techniques that we employed in this is looking for off-site access to the site that wouldn't have to cross the wetlands. So we tried to, we tried to look at the adjacent lots, east and west, but they're both constrained by the similar wetland that goes along the road. So even, even using an access easement, we could not get on here without wetland impact.
Right. So you actually explored that possibility and found that it was not feasible?
Yes, sir.
Great. And then, Mr. Heckard, maybe perhaps you can explain the the planned fill there. There's, I think that you're going to utilize a culvert to try to maintain some connection between the wetland functions. Am I, am I correct? Am I understanding?
Yes, sir. That, the where the wetland goes across the north of the property, it's basically a roadside ditch that has been ditched through a wetland. So what we've done is, we've had to, we had to cross that. We had to cross that ditch to get, to have access to the site. So we've, we've, we've proposed a fill of the minimum wetland. I think that's a twelve-foot or fifteen-foot width road, and that's the only fill that we have, and that's, that's the only way that we could achieve access to the site.
And then I'm sure the applicant understands, but also for members of the public today, because this project does involve the filling of wetland, I don't have final permitting authority over that. But it does appear that the applicant has already obtained a letter of permission from the US Army Corps. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other agencies with jurisdiction over this? Is there any other permits that are required, or is it just US Army Corps?
Washington Department of Ecology required a four oh one permit for this, and they've granted that as of two months ago.
Section four oh one was granted. Let's go, okay.
Is it four oh one, Marshall?
Yeah, the nationwide permit?
Yeah.
I believe, yes.
Is that, is that available, Mr. Reed? For, for the record?
I can, I can get that out and then send that to you and we can include that in the record, sure.
That would be great. And I'll go ahead and when I receive that, add that as exhibits. Let's see, where are we at here? Exhibit, I think thirteen is where we're at. Thank you. Let's see.
Actually, I have exhibit thirteen and fourteen as public comments and written comments, if any submitted at the hearing. So we would, I would like to call that exhibit fifteen for the nationwide permit.
How about let's do this, just, I, I just like, I don't like any blank, blank exhibit, so I'll reserve my, you know, what I ultimately designate that exhibit until after the hearing. It'll be the next open slot, we'll just say. So if there's any writ comments, then we'll adjust accordingly. And then, Mr. Heckard, perhaps you can just explain the existing conditions of the site and how the impacts to the wetland and wetland buffer were calculated, if you could?
Okay. This is basically, I think as Marshall mentioned in passing, this is basically coastal dunal, coastal dunal system habitat. It's, it's basically, it's sand, wetlands in the lower areas and every area that is elevated a foot above the baseline for the wetlands is on little hummocks throughout. And what we've tried to do, and you could see in the configuration of the house, we've tried to avoid, we've tried to avoid touching any of the wetlands as possible. We've actually reconfigured the house to, to tilt it sideways a little bit and, and decrease the size to enable it to squeeze in around all these wetlands.
And then, so the direct impacts to the buffer, that would be the, is it four thousand three hundred and thirty seven square feet? Just looking, I'm looking at the kind of the chart that you put together with the footprint of the house access driveway.
Yeah, mine went away now, so I'm trying to get it back. Yes, on the, on the report of April eighteenth, page, page eight basically goes over the, goes over the calculations that were required for the mitigation. The direct impact is one hundred and fifteen square feet. We don't do cubic feet for that. The direct buffer impact was four thousand three hundred and thirty seven square feet, and the indirect wetland impact, which is which is a Department of Ecology calculation that diminishes the effect as you proceed away from the, the impact is at fifty eight, eighty-five, eighty-eight square feet. And that's Yes?
That's the indirect impacts of actually the fill.
Correct.
Correct. And then, let's see. And then I think you touched on how the project was designed to minimize impacts. Do you have anything further on that?
Well, just to let you know that we reconfigured, we reconfigured the, the site about three times. And I think those last two were in conjunction with, with the planning staff at Ocean Shores to make sure that we got it right and it was acceptable as far as the regulations go. So we initially started out, I think with a two thousand square foot house, and it was, it was lowered and minimized to fifteen hundred. Like I said, we, we cantered the, we cantered the, the aspect of the, of the development to allow it to, to squeeze in between the wetlands as you see it there. And we've, we've done, we've done all that we could with the constraints of the lot to, to minimize it and keep it, keep it, keep the impacts to a minimum.
And then you determined that onsite mitigation would not be feasible, given the conditions and size of the slot?
No, the, the, the the soils in this area are basically sand. So we could, we could do some mitigation planting in the, in the wetlands there, but that it's very difficult to, to accomplish. It's long-term and we didn't, I don't have very good, very good track record of success with those kind of, with those kind of onsite mitigations and that kind of soil and those kind of conditions. So we'd ultimately determine, and it was agreed by, by Ocean Shores planning staff, that we, that we do off-site mitigation.
So has the city confirmed that there's adequate credits available in its wetland mitigation bank? Where are we with that, Mr. Reed?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I reserved credits for this project. It's been in the pipe for quite a while. So I'm, I'm down to just a little over one, one full credit, and I've got a couple of hearings that will be coming up that were reserved. So I do have credits available in the bank for this project.
And then, yeah, you just discussed how the remaining wetland and buffer area would be preserved and protected through the delineation fencing and critical areas signage.
Yes, you could see, you can see on our development map, the, excuse me. The, the constraint, the, the bounds of the clearing limits around the site are also, are also demarcated by, by a fence. And that fence will go all the way around. Number one, that'll be the silt fence during development. And we'll, we'll put the required, required permanent fencing up once the, once the development is complete.
Great. Well, thank you. I don't have any additional questions for the city or Mr. Heckard at this time. Are there any other members of city staff that are, that would like to testify on this first matter?
I know, Your Honor.
And then, Mr. Heckard, did you have any additional testimony that you would like to provide at this time?
No, thank you, sir. And in addition to answering any questions, I'm finished.
Great, thank you. And it does appear that we have the applicant here. Can you, is it Saquera? Can you go ahead? Saquera?
Yes.
Uh, let's go ahead and get you sworn in, Mr. Saquera. You swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. So now's your opportunity, if you have any additional information about the proposal that you'd like me or the public to know.
I do not have any additional information, Mr. Sorter, but I'm, and I would also like to say that I'm willing to comply with any guidance that the city provides. And I'm willing to follow that.
And did you have a chance to review the conditions that were recommended by city staff?
Yes, Mr. Sorter.
And any issue with adhering to those conditions?
No.
And then generally, with these type of matters, I add a condition just requiring that the project comply with any conditions imposed by other agencies with jurisdiction. Any issue there?
No.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other witnesses from the applicant team before we move to the members of the public?
No.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and we'll turn to the public testimony portion of the hearing. I see Ms. Piara has her hand up and would like to testify in this first matter. Let's go ahead and swear you in.
Thank you.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Vida Piara, and it's spelled V like invictor, I, D, A. Last name is spelled P like Papa, I, E, R, A. Thank you, Your Honor, for recognizing me regarding RUU twenty twenty four zero zero six at Bel Air Loop. One thing I just, two things I just wanted to emphasize regarding the nationwide permit, that was number fourteen, and that I would like to enter into the record. I, I hear that you're already doing that. That is a linear transportation project permit. It's N W P number fourteen. The other thing uh I wanted to mention was beginning August first twenty twenty four, the twenty twenty four stormwater manual becomes effective. Until that time, the twenty nineteen stormwater manual is in effect. And I would hope, uh, Your Honor, would impose the additional requirement, and I know you already said additional agencies, but if you could be more specific and mention in particular the uh Western Washington Stormwater Manual. Uh, that's what I'm requesting. Otherwise, I don't have any comments on this project. Uh, thank you very much for allowing me to testify.
Great, thank you for being here today. Uh, do we have any other members of the public uh on Zoom that would like to testify? Do we know, Mr. Reed, if the the other attendees are with the other projects or?
Um, I'm not seeing the list of uh other online attendees, if we can throw that up.
I can go ahead and but I'll I'll just uh I'll just name off the people here and they can chime in if they want to testify. I have a Mary Ann Smith. Thank you. Uh, Sylvia Calvicant?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Did you wish to testify in this first matter?
Um, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lori? Cartelius? Okay, I have a Laura Caldwell. If you if you wish to testify in this first matter, go ahead and unmute and let me know. And then we have a caller with the number ending three, three, eight, nine. I'm I'm not sure how you unmute when you're calling. Sometimes it's star six, but if you wish to testify, please let me know. Uh, it doesn't appear that anyone else on Zoom wants to testify. Is there anyone in the room, Mr. Reed, that wants to testify on this first matter?
Yeah, um, anybody in the audience like to provide uh testimony to this project? Nobody? Okay, no, we don't have anybody in the room.
Great, thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Reed, uh, regarding Miss Piera's comment about the stormwater, uh, is stormwater something that's reviewed during the building permit stage? How how does that work in the the city of Ocean Shores?
Yeah, um, stormwater is reviewed and currently our Ocean Shore's municipal code um calls out um the two thousand and five stormwater manual as our uh guiding document. Um, there's a conflict between parcels that are not uh part of the shoreline jurisdiction. Our shoreline master program uh refers to the most current stormwater manual, which today, as Ms. Piera has pointed out, is the twenty nineteen manual, and so all of our projects that are in the shoreline jurisdiction will review be reviewed against the the most current um stormwater manual. I I believe the conflict between our current Ocean Shore's municipal code and uh in her request for um the twenty nineteen manual, um, our code still calls out the two thousand and five stormwater manual as that guiding document. And I don't have anything in code that requ- that requires the most restrictive like it would in the uh stormwater man or in the uh shoreline master program. We're working on getting that updated um in code.
All right, well, that's something I'm gonna have to give some thought to uh here, um, you know, my review is of the use, but I understand that stormwater is is an impact that uh relates to that use, so I'm gonna give that some thought. Um, are there any uh last thoughts on behalf of the city on this first matter?
Uh, no, not on behalf of the city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, great. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and uh uh, Miss Piera, I'm sorry, the just, we only allow one round of uh public comments for each uh matter, so um, uh, I will go ahead and adjourn this first matter. I want to thank everyone for participating today. Uh, it is my intent to issue a decision on this application within ten business days of the record closing. Um, those of you that are here for the first matter, uh, you're welcome to stay for the other matters, but you can also leave if you wish. Thank you. And then, Mr. Reed? Thank you. Uh, are you gonna be presenting on the next matter today?
I am, yes.
Thank you. So you can just go ahead and let me know uh when you're ready, and then I'll do my introduction.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm ready to go, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. So next on the agenda, we have number C U P twenty four zero 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 three, a request for approval of a conditional use use permit to allow for an outdoor use in the retail commercial or B one zone on a currently vacant parcel located at nine eighty nine Wawona Avenue Southeast. The exhibits I received and review reviewed in advance of the hearing include the staff report prepared by city staff, uh, the applicant's proposed site plan and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Uh, with that, Mr. Reed, you are still sworn in and may begin your presentation when ready.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so this is, again, the Artman Holdings CUP application, CUP twenty four zero 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 three. Um, the purpose of this application is for a conditional use of a commercially zoned property for the purpose of B one retail commercial. The applicant, Artman Holdings, uh, Seabreeze Sauna and Cold Plunge LLC, uh Christina and Christopher Artman and Tammy Resaville? Reswell? Uh, co-owners um at P O Box nine 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 Ocean Shores, Washington. Uh, the project description is called the Seabreeze Sauna and Cold Plunge. Legal description is Division twenty, Lot thirty two of Block six, um, located at eight, nine, excuse me, nine, eight, nine, Wawona Avenue Southeast in Ocean Shores, Washington. Um. And we are we, uh, the applicant has approximately five hundred and sixty square feet of structure proposed in this uh in this uh application. Existing conditions, the zoning is B one retail commercial of this parcel. Uh, land use, the property is currently vacant, commercial land. The surrounding conditions, uh, to the north is B one retail commercial, to the south is B one retail commercial. Uh, to the east is B one retail commercial, and to the west is public recreational known as Lake Menard. Uh, the land use designation is general commercial to the north, south, and east and uh freshwaterways to the west. The existing land use uh to the north and south are single-family residences. Uh, to the east is general commercial, and to the west is the freshwaterways or Lake Menard. Background, the property is located on Wawona Avenue Southeast in the retail commercial district, surrounded by a mixture of retail, commercial, and residential uses and vacant lots. Uh, notices uh for the public hearing for this conditional use permit uh scheduled for today, July tenth, uh, were sent out to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property as required by Ocean Shore's municipal code seventeen fifty two oh ninety. Uh, notice of the public hearing was also provided to the Daily World newspaper for publication in the June twenty fifth, twenty seventh, twenty four editions. Staff analysis. Um, a conditional use permit is required for uses that have some outdoor characteristics and may be permitted if it can be shown that the outdoor activity is customarily a part of such use. Um, staff has determined this project is listed as a conditional use for this zoning district uh under Ocean Shore's municipal code seventeen thirty four oh thirty, conditional uses, section F. Um, seventeen thirty four oh thirty, conditional uses listed here. Uh, under section F, uses that have some outdoor characteristics may be permitted if it can be shown that such outdoor activity is customarily a part of such uses or that some public benefit will accrue by location of such use in this district. Uh, examples are automobile service stations, public buildings and facilities, nurseries, lumberyards, or other uses of a similar similar and compatible nature. The applicant has submitted a plot plan indicating the location of the proposed structures. The Ocean Shore's comprehensive plan goal land use four uh provides guidance regarding development of high-quality building and site design that is sensitive to the character of the surrounding area, including landscape buffers to separate incompatible uses and provide land use transitions. All shoreline requirements shall be met for this project proposed development, including setbacks, buffers, and shoreline protection as provided for in the shoreline master uh program. Should the conditional use be granted, the city of Ocean Shores will also require compliance with all building construction and fire code requirements for the overall development. The proposal will require adequate parking to be maintained onsite uh per Ocean Shore's municipal code title seventeen fifty four. Uh, attach this report or the conditional use permit application, site plan, and other documents prepared by city staff. Uh, the environmental determination. Um, staff has determined that a SEPA uh checklist will be required for the review of this proposed project under WAC one ninety seven eleven eight hundred. Uh, the resulting requirements imposed by the regulatory agencies as a result of the SEPA review will be imposed as requirements on this project. Um, conditions. Should the hearing examiner approve this request for a conditional use permit, the uh following conditions shall also apply. All requirement, all required permitting requirements should be followed, including but not limited to building, electrical, environmental, fire, and zoning. Um, erosion control measures must be in place prior to any clearing, grading, or construction to control the disturbed sand from blowing into adjacent properties or into the streets. The applicant shall provide a complete building plan along with the applicable permit application showing the use of the structures and any proposed accessory structures. And the applicant shall provide temporary water sewer power during construction. Uh, exterior lighting shall be screened or directed in such a way to prevent glare from being a nuisance to the adjacent properties. Signs must be in accordance with the current city regulations and may not be located on street right-ofways or adjacent properties, and fire access shall not be obstructed. And that concludes my um my staff report on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I do have some questions for you. Um, so you mentioned that this property is zoned B one, which uh under the code appears to allow for a wide variety of residential and commercial uses. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But uses that have some outdoor characteristics that requires a conditional use permit?
Yes, that's also correct.
Uh, and then, under the zoning code, such outdoor activity must uh either be customarily part of such uses or provide some public benefit by being located in the district. Am I correct in my understanding there?
Yes, that would be correct.
So I have reviewed this proposed site plan, but can you provide some further detail on the proposed use here? It appears to be some kind of sauna facility. It's not entirely clear to me from the materials.
Yeah, I I'm not sure how to describe it as as a use, but um but it's basically a a public service where customers would visit the site and have opportunity to um to uh sit in a sauna. And and then after the sauna, they have a cold bath that um it's kind of a new trend in, I I'm not sure if it's physical therapy or or what the exact um, I'm gonna let the applicants probably dive into this a little bit deeper once uh they have an opportunity to testify. But um but then there's a there's a a cold plunge or a cold water bath that is partaken after the uh after the sauna to rinse off uh all the sweat and impurities that come out during the sauna. And then there's also a a shower facility to wash off after the cold plunge.
And then, in in looking at this site plan, uh, what elements of this proposed use are outdoors? I'm still, uh, are the Yeah, the sauna unit enclosed, are those outdoors? I'm just
The the saunas, yeah, the saunas would be in a closed uh structure. Um, the outdoor features, um, as as it's been explained, and I'm hoping I understood it correctly, the uh the cold plunge tubs would be outside, and then the shower facilities also would be outside on the deck.
And then, is there any, it appears that there's fencing, or is there fencing or any other type of vegetative screening that would be provided?
Yes, there's a fence on both sides of the property and a fence to the front. And then uh and then the parking in front of that.
And then um, perhaps I can get a little bit more detail from the applicant when it's their opportunity to testify, but uh, one of the bigger issues I I'm seeing here, Mr. Reed, is you indicated that a SEPA checklist would be required and that SEPA review would be conducted. Uh, typically, that takes place before my review. Uh, it takes place. Uh, I can point out in the WAC, the Washington Administrative Code, uh, it's one nine seven eleven oh five five. Uh, that that indicates essentially that uh the lead agency prepares threshold determination at the earliest possible point in the planning process. Uh, and at the latest, shall begin environmental review when the application is complete. Uh, it's a bit of an issue for me because, you know, particularly with conditional use permits, I have to address the impacts of the proposed use, uh, including the environmental impact, so uh I guess you know, I I like that entire SEPA review process to to be complete before I begin my review. Uh, I you know, I'm I'm thinking that this may be a case where we have to leave the record open for that SEPA review to take place and allowing the appeal period to expire. I I don't anticipate that doing so would delay the project since this needs to be completed in any case. What what are your thoughts on that, Mr. Reed?
Um, I'm, I I've taken note of your comments, and I'm perfectly agreeable to um to submit SEPA, leave the record open, and then provide any comments from the agencies uh or your review in consideration of the project.
And then, uh, the other issue, I think I saw in the staff report some mention of uh shoreline setbacks. Is this property within the shoreline jurisdiction?
Yes, this Yeah, that's correct. This property is within the shoreline jurisdiction. And so, uh, we will also be requiring that a shoreline substantial development permit. Um. I I guess so my my thought was this um this project would not require a variance or a conditional use as a part of the shoreline permitting. Um, and the intent from the city side would be to um run this through the normal shoreline permitting for a substantial development permit, which would um give consideration to the shoreline uh vegetative buffers and stuff like that. I can tell you that the future development of this project uh does encroach into the buffer and and so unless the applicant um at some time in the future wants to make application for a variance, um, then those future uh appurtenances that are shown on their current site plan uh would not be allowed.
And that that presents an issue for me as well in approving this, you know, or reviewing uh this conditional use permit, and i- it appears that there's some more work that needs to be done, uh. I present, uh, and the SSDP, well, certainly a shoreline variance, if that's required, that's something that would come before me. Uh, as far as the SSDP, is that an administrative process?
Uh, that is, in conjunction with the Washington State Department of Ecology, they will also weigh in on and approve the substantial development permit. Uh, this, so I guess where I separated this proposal um from the environmental side um is is this um this conditional use is more of a land use, conditional use, as opposed to an environmental uh variance or conditional use associated with either a wetland or the shoreline uh master program. And and that was based um solely on the nature of the outdoor use of this proposal.
Yeah, I mean, so some of the issues that that presents to me is, again, with the conditional use permit, I have to address, you know, impacts and some oftentimes my some oftentimes my uh imposed conditions would require adherence to the submitted site plan because, you know, for instance, there's fencing here um that, you know, would minimize impacts to neighboring properties. And if the site plan isn't in conformance with the requirements of the uh Shoreline Management Act, I I I don't see how I can require compliance with the with the site plan. So that that does present some issues for me. I I I kinda have to think that one through. Um, but maybe let's let's go ahead and uh hear from the applicant and uh let me think about that for a bit here. Do we have the applicant here today?
Yeah, we do. Okay, I'm gonna move my mic over to the applicant. We have Christine uh here. And Tammy.
Hello, I'm
Can you go ahead and uh raise your right hand? Or both of you, if you're gonna be providing, both of you are gonna be providing testimony. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you both go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
I am Christina Artman, C H R I S T I N A, last name is Artman, A R T M A N.
I'm Tammy Raizwell, spelling is T A M M Y, Raizwell is R A I S W E L L.
Thank you. So now is your opportunity to uh provide any additional information that you would like to present?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have brought with me two exhibits I'd like to enter into the record today. The first one is a just a simple fact sheet that gives a little bit of background on an overview of what Seabreeze Sauna is proposing as a business to do. And the second one is some pictures um to help describe what we're trying to achieve in the natural outdoor setting with the use of outdoor cold plunges and the outdoor saunas. And so I have both of those here.
Thank you. If you can provide those to Mr. Reed, he can uh forward those to my office.
I kinda would like to just go over the fact sheet a little bit, and then maybe that's a good place to start.
Sure.
Um, so the structure, the structure of the business is currently, um, my husband and I purchased the property over on nine eight nine Wyona, and it's um organized under Artman Holdings LLC. So we are the property owners of the business. Um, Tammy and I have entered into um a hundred percent woman-owned business called Seabreeze Sauna and Cold Plunge. And it's the intent that Seabreeze Sauna and Cold Plunge will be leasing the property from Artman Holdings until such a time as the is the business is successful, that Seabreeze can come in and purchase a hundred percent of the property from Artman Holdings, so that we'll, we will be a hundred percent business owners in the future on that property. Um, the surrounding characteristics of the business district currently, there's, it's it's surrounded by commercial va- it's vacation rentals. Um, there's other businesses around such as storage units. There's a towing company and a bike rental company within the area, but it really does sit within the the vacation rental district. Um, the overview of Seabreeze Sauna's business is it's an outdoor wellness experience that provides our residents and visitors the use of saunas and cold plunges that are surrounded by a natural environment, allowing for quiet rest, relaxation, and rejuvenation of the mind and body. It will be a day-use-only business that is tranquil, tranquil, quiet, and alcohol-free. Outdoor saunas will sit on each side of the property as we've shown in the plot plan, looking out to an open landscaped grassy area in the middle of the lot. It will have zero impact on the shoreline as the preservation of this natural environment is a large component of our business model of peaceful rest and relaxation. The business will include um a speci- a specifically designed ADA outdoor sauna, accessible bathroom, and ADA parking. I have to say that um we're kind of proud about the ADA outdoor sauna because in currently in Ocean Shores, there's there's no saunas where people that need health and healing, who are, you know, limited to wheelchairs, can access. So we're we're kinda excited to be the first and only ADA outdoor sauna that will be available here in the city. Um, we plan to open one to, we we plan to open our business with one to two saunas. Um, each sauna will be located on its own individual cement pad, as indicated on the plot plan, that includes two cold plunges, a changing area, and a cold running shower, um, all designed to run into the public sewer system. Uh, it includes a check-in building located on the street side of the property and allows for parking. Um, the property will be fenced on the sides for security and privacy purposes. The benefits to the surrounding business district um is it will enhance the surrounding business district by providing vacation rental visitors with an additional activity in Ocean Shores that is not offered anywhere else within the city or surrounding areas. It will also be a very low-impact, quiet, landscape business in a park-like atmosphere that adds character to the properties that it joins. It will help make the vacation rentals more attractive for folks looking for rest and relaxa- re- relaxation here in Ocean Shores. And the last comment is, it's also ha- gonna have benefits for Ocean Shores residents. It's gonna be a gathering place for like-minded residents interested in health and well-being that is unique to anything else available in nearby Hoquiem, Seabrook, and Aberdeen. So, thank you for allowing me to give you that explanation, and I'll kinda put this up here, too. This sort of shows what the outdoor saunas look like as they sit out on their own individual cement pads and some cold plunges that are also out here. So you can kind of see, we really, we really wanna take in into um consideration all of the natural surroundings and and actually enhance and add to that. So thank you for, thank you for allowing me to address you today, Tammy.
Thank you. So uh, did you gather, uh, oh, go go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, I'm Tammy. Um, no problem. I think the thing that I would love to add to the conversation is our goal and our intent is actually to very subtly fit into the nature and environment. We have a property on Lake Minard. We have beautiful the um kind of the wildlife or the the greenery that comes up along the lake is absolutely gorgeous, and we're hoping to keep you know, a lot of that in place as part of the relaxing environment. Um, at this point in time, you know, we don't have very many people, we don't have the ability to have very many people on the property at one time. So there would only be five to eight people at guests at a time. Um, plus the owners, Christina and myself. Um, we also, you know, for us, this was very much, when I think about the benefits, I think about that in a community setting and the specificity of our community. So for me personally, I have experienced a lot of healing in doing cold plunges and saunas. My body gets detoxification in the sauna, and inflammation and anxiety get um very much helped in the cold plunge. I know that this um community, a lot of people are in retirement. They have a lot of aches and pains. And my hope is on a health and well-being level that this is an activity that they can incorporate into their weekly life that would hopefully care for the aches and pains. Um, on an, on another act, community um level, you know, people in retirement have a lot of time on their hands, and so to have something to look forward to that they get to meet their friends with, like, hey, let's go do our sauna and cold plunge together. That is our hope, is that it would make people feel less lonely and give them something to look forward to on on their weekly calendar in addition to enhancing Ocean Shores as a potential tourist attraction during the summer. So our hope as a whole is to really, this piece of property was very ideal for us because it was in such a commercially-zoned property with a lot of uh vacation rentals in hopes of enhancing, um, you know, people that come to Ocean Shores to relax, enhancing their visit as well as adding to the community as a whole, getting people to get to know other people in their community. Um, we're very hopeful for that. Um, I also will mention that I am a licensed mental health therapist, and I have seen the benefits both with my clients in terms of anxiety and depression. And I think that that is something that could be very beneficial to our community and our society. Um, I also, if you have any questions about the plot plan, you know, I'm a little bit confused by what was said here today in terms of the plot plan encroaching on the natural environment. That was never my understanding, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but I do wanna acknowledge that I, that our intent is to actually preserve a lot of the environment around us. So if you have any clarifying questions that we could answer, we would be happy to do so. It seems to be a little bit a point of misunderstanding, which is totally normal, and we'd love to clear that up.
Great, thank you. I think it's just some some process issues here. Uh, my understanding is that uh this property is within, you know, what's called the shoreline jurisdiction. And any development within the shoreline jurisdiction exceeding a certain cost threshold uh generally requires what's called a shoreline substantial development permit. And I believe that Mr. Reed indicated that this this project would require an SSDP. Um, so it just means, you know, if if I were to go ahead and approve this use, I'm not, I'm not saying I am or not, that other permits would be required. Uh, and then uh, Mr. Reed also indicated that uh your site plan, as it's presently uh put together, uh, could encroach in what's called the fifty-foot uh vegetative conservation buffer from the uh ordinary high watermark of that water body, in which case um what's called a shoreline variance would be required. Am I correct in my understanding there, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, the um, the the two units that are um far the south or or closest to the ordinary high watermark are identified as future on the uh, on the plot plan. And so um, in until such time as those are uh being applied for as a permitted use, um, I don't feel like we can require a variance. Um, or we wouldn't even apply, have the applicant apply for a variance for something that's not being proposed to be built. These are future um, future identified, and if they would um indicate that they wanted to build them, then a variance would come before you for approval.
Great, thank you. Um, so uh, I don't have any additional questions for the applicant at this time. I think we should go ahead and see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this proposal. Ms. Pierre, you're still under oath, so you can comment whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding uh conditional use permit, twenty twenty-four zero zero three Artman Holdings LLC at nine eight nine Winona Avenue Southeast, I'd like to make the following comments. Um, the twenty twenty-four stormwater manual is gonna be required for this project. There's a CIPA that's missing, as was already discussed, as well as a, as a future shoreline substantial development permit. I also wanna discuss some potential operational issues with this uh type of use. Uh, first, let me just back up a second, please. Um, I'm concerned that uh the proponents are not showing where the outdoor water-related use is in this shoreline district proposal. I believe uh Mr. Sorter identified that as well. Um, regarding the operational issues, um, what about billing on this parcel? You're gonna have ostensibly or in the future six connections to the sanitary sewer, four pads that have those tanks on them, and two uh bathrooms. So is this gonna be charged for one billing connection or six? The other thing I wanna talk about is what's the wastewater discharge that's coming out of these tanks. It's conceivable that down the line, I see that there's two, um, there's a sauna, and then there are two plu- quote-unquote plunge tanks in each of these areas. And I wasn't sure from the drawing whether these were covered structures or not. If they are covered, then I've got additional comments, so I'll just assume that they're open, which is what I think I heard. Um, but those plunge tanks uh which are connected to sewer could possibly be converted to float tanks which contain magnesium sulfate in very high concentrations. Some of these float tanks that are used for sensory deprivation have up to eight hundred and fifty pounds of Epsom salts in each float tank. Occasionally, those have to be discharged to the sanitary sewer. And and just uh for the non-chemists out there, magnesium sulfate contains almost ten percent magnesium, but more importantly, it contains over thirteen percent of sulfur, which combined uh in certain conditions can create sulfuric acid in the sewer lines and erode our infrastructure where the pipes are made out of metal uh and other constituents. So I would want to uh have fire go by and see whether there has been a change of use. Perhaps uh there's uh additional uh uses that are being taking place here. So that's on the wastewater side. And then the last thing I wanna mention, and I'm sorry I have to, but I wanna enter into the record the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three municipal court docket and uh which uh on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Christopher Dean Artman was arraigned for a shoreline habitat violation that occurred on April fifth, twenty twenty-three. Now, I don't know what the disposition of that case was, and I'll read the case number for you, Mr. Sorter. That's case number zero 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 four three three one. I don't know what the disposition of that case was, but perhaps you could find out and include that in your decision.
Was this a a Grace Harbor Superior Court case number?
City of Ocean Shores Municipal Court. It was a shoreline habitat violation. The date of the violation is April fifth, twenty twenty-three. It was observed by Officer Sean Beebe. And the arraignment was May twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. So with that, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else I wanna say before you, I get closed out. Uh, but I think that'll do it. Thank you, Mr. Sorter.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. Are there any other members on uh the Zoom that would like to testify on this matter? If so, feel free to utilize the raise hand function or unmute and and speak. Mr. Reed, is there anyone in the room uh that would like to testify on this matter?
Yes, we've got uh one, one person that would like to testify. If you'd like to come to the head table here, I'll turn your microphone on.
Uh, hello, I'm Brian Hoag, B R Y A N H O O G.
Can you go ahead and raise your right hand? Let me swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today? Can you go, can you please spell, oh, can you please spell your name again for the record? I didn't catch that.
Uh, Brian, B R Y A N, Hoag, H O O G.
H O O G. Thank you, Mr. Hoag.
Uh, looking over the documents, um, I guess it would have been nice if there were like a three-dimensional view, like when you, you know, when they elevation views or something that they do for houses, just to get a better idea of what it's gonna look like. Um, I'm wondering about the fuel for the fire pit. Uh, in particular, I would would be, would be hopeful that it would not, wood fires would not be allowed on a regular basis because it generates a lot of smoke. And the wind, there's less wind over there than right on the shore, so the wind might hang around, cause some breathing problems. If it is a propane tank, propane fired fire pit, which would make sense because a lot of businesses in town that have.
And if, Mr. Hoag, if you can speak into the mic, I'm just having a little bit of trouble picking up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's great. That's great.
So if it is a propane tank, I'd be, I'd, I'd be interested in knowing the size and location of the tank on the property, just as a visual thing. If it's near the, near the street, you know, if it's, if it's going to be a normal residential tank or it's going to be something very large or something for the fire pit. I'd be interested in knowing the height of the fence. I know there's rules about heights of fences in town. There's a multi-story condominium building across the street. So I guess privacy might be a concern. The south end of Ocean Shores is suffering from severe erosion. The city is, is trying its best to mitigate that until a permanent solution can be found. My personal opinion is that none of the proposals are going to solve it, except for rebuilding the jetty, which is probably 40 or 50 million dollars. Apparently, there is not a moratorium on new construction south end, but there is no guarantee that Lake Menard can be preserved that far south. It's so close to the ocean. You know, if it hadn't been for the emergency measures this fall, it would have been breached. I guess it may be more of a question, is the city considering a moratorium on new construction at the south end until a plan is in place to, to stop the south end from washing away, basically, eroding away. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoag. We'll turn back to the city and applicant to see if we can get any answers after we conclude the public testimony portion here. Mr. Reed, is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this matter?
Anybody else like to, nope, nobody else. Oh, Mr. Artman would like to testify? You, you're going to, Chris, you'll have to speak into the microphone about four, four to six inches away and, and then the hearing examiner will be able to hear you.
I'm Christopher Artman. I'd like to address the.
Well, good morning. Let's get you, let's get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Great. And can you spell your name for the record, please, Mr. Artman?
Christopher, C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R. Last name is Artman, A-R-T-M-A-N. I'll address the ticket that I was issued that Laura Caldwell brought up. The ticket was for, I'm sorry. Anyway, anyway, I'll address the ticket that I was issued by Officer Beebe.
And then I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Artman, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. If you can just maybe get a little closer.
The ticket I was issued by Laura, by Officer Beebe. And the judge dismissed it. And as long as I did what I was told to do, which was to plant three trees. We had purchased a house that hadn't been issued in three, and hadn't been lived in in 13 years. And I didn't know I needed to get a permit to remove the vegetation and so forth around the house and in the backyard. So. Anyway, I went to court, the judges missed it, as long as I did what I was told to do. And we took down some vegetation on the other side of the house, the fence, which was in the buffer zone that I didn't know was in the buffer zone. That's what that was all about. It was supposed to have been removed from the record because it's been well over a year, as long as I did what I was told to do. So that's what that was all about.
Thank you, Mr. Artman.
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I'd like to add just one thing to that. Also, the, the place where the violation took place was not in association with this project. It's, is totally a separate parcel on the other side over on the bay. So the, the violation is not associated with this project.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else in the room that wishes to testify?
Nope, nobody here.
Thank you. So I guess I'll, I'll turn back to you first, Mr. Reed, if you have any responses to some of the concerns that were raised here today.
Well, I'll start out the things that I can answer off the top of my head for, for VITA. The utility billing on this would be set up as a, a commercial account wherein they would be billed a single connection for water and sewer, because they're not going to separate units. If, if they were to put separate water meters in, then they could bill each tank separately. But in a business like this, it doesn't make sense to, to have separate billing units. So it'll be set up as a single commercial utility account for both water sewer and storm drain. At this point, I, I, I'd like to move to the, to the float tank and chemical consideration. VITA makes a, a very good point, but there has never been any talk of a, a float tank in this facility. And based on what I know about the municipal code, if you were going to change the, the, the use, then that would require another review. And we would go through that. And then to Brian's comments over smoke, basically, the way the fire department has enforced that within the city is if there's smoke that's causing concern with a neighbor in the area, the fire department's asked the, the per, person owning the fire pit to put the fire out. There was not a, a design standard submitted. I know there are some new fire pits that I've been exposed to recently that are a high efficiency that produced almost zero smoke. And, and if this turns out to be a propane fire pit, then it will be even less intrusive beyond that. I don't have an answer for the propane tank. We might turn to the applicant for that. Regarding the erosion at the south end of Ocean Shores, there is not an official moratorium on new construction at the south end of Ocean Shores, but I can tell you that based on the erosion that's going on along Marine View Drive, I'm not issuing any permits when, within this area that has been identified at risk. And then the city is taking short to medium-term measures. We've just begun the design and permitting for those erosion measures. And while I agree with Mr. Hoag's comments about the, the long-term solution, we do have a medium-term solution for the, for the near term as we work on the long-term solution, which is the funding, and it's going to be a very large ask from, from the Corps of Engineers to rebuild that jetty. So in answer to that question, there's, there's an effective moratorium in that it's not possible to get a, a letter from a geotechnical engineer certifying the shorelines on the south side of Marine View Drive as a stable shoreline. So without, without having that certification from an engineer, it would be impossible to get a permit from the city or or approval from the Department of Ecology for department, development in that area. So there's an effective moratorium in that area, but not on the north side of Marine View Drive, up in the area where this proposal is, is being located. I think that's all that I'm able to answer. That covers most of the, the considerations, I think. The only other question I have maybe for the applicants is, is the question about a, a larger than normal propane tank, if that's part of your guys' plan, and if, if you have an answer to that.
We don't have any plans for any propane tanks at this time.
Okay, so the applicants have clarified that. There's no plans to install a propane tank and the saunas are powered by electricity. The one that, the one that they have purchased.
And then, Mr. Reed, it appears that we do have someone on Zoom that has their hand raised. Just given the kind of format here of, I'm going to allow them to provide comments at this time. I don't usually turn back to the public, but given, given the technology issues, I'm going to go ahead and do that. So we have Lori Hartelius, if I'm saying that correctly? You may be muted. The hand is no longer. Did, did Lori, did you want to provide any comments on this proposal? Hand is raised again. You're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Yeah, we're not hearing you in the room either, Lori, if, if you're trying to provide comment.
It's a, it's a little unorthodox, but Lori, can you utilize your chat function to at least let us know if you're trying to weigh in here? Or if you could turn on your video? Well, while Lori is trying to figure that out, did the applicants have any other responses to the public comments that we've heard so far?
They, they don't have anything additional that they would like to add.
I just, I, I want to ensure that any member of the public here has a chance to testify, but we're having some issues here. Lori, are you, are you trying to provide comment? Can you just type in the, there's a little chat button at the bottom of the Zoom? If you can click that and just type something in there, just to let me know if someone's there.
So it says that she does have her chat open.
If you could just type a even hello message there, just to.
Okay, so she has responded to your request. She says, really, I am just trying to make a process comment. We don't have many. And then she's making a request or, or she mentions a potential agenda.
Sir, any, anything else coming in?
She just said that they received the letter last week. They are, they're the house to the south of the project. Says they don't have any negative comments, but they're frustrated.
I'm going to propose this, Ms. Hartelius, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Is it possible for you to submit some written comments to Mr. Reed and he can forward those to me at the conclusion of this hearing?
She indicates that she will. Thank you, Lori. We appreciate your patience.
Thank you. So if you can, if you can try to get those to Mr. Reed by the close of business today, he will forward those to me and I'll take those into consideration. I want to thank you for being here and apologize for the technical issues that we're having.
Your Honor, we also had another, another comment come in. Was that, Sarah, was that from a Jason Brewer? Did he?
I'm here.
So we, we have Jason Brewer. Jason, were you interested in making a public comment on this matter as well?
No, I wanted to know what the project was that was happening, right? Like the letter says, hey, there's some construction happening in your neighborhood within 300 feet of your property. I'm curious what it is. I was curious what the agenda was because that's typically how my meetings go. Like there's a agenda, yes. And, and if I missed it, I mean.
Yeah, the information, the information was made available on the city's website in conjunction with this project that had the, the site plan and, you know, kind of a, a brief on what the construction project would entail. The reason that it's coming before the hearing examiner for a conditional use is because the construction, while it would be allowed under all other city codes, has an outdoor nature to it, meaning there's some outdoor function to the, to the project. And so that requires a conditional use permit, and that's the reason for the hearing.
Understood.
Had they, had they proposed to do this entire project within the confines of a building, then we wouldn't even have needed a, a, a conditional use permit for the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Are we getting any other messages that I should know about?
I'm, I'm not seeing anything else. We have, we have Mr. Hoag in the room raising his hand again.
Yeah, I, generally with these things, we, I don't do a lot of back and forth, otherwise it can just string on and on. So you get one opportunity to provide your comments, Mr. Hoag, and anyone else attending this particular matter. If you would like to provide written comments, I am going to allow that. We're having some issues today. So if you want to submit written comments, you can do so to Mr. Reed by the close of business today. And I will take those into consideration when issuing my decision. So with that, Mr. Reed, does it appear that there's any other members of the public who have not had an opportunity to testify that would like to do so?
No indication. I think that everybody that has wanted to testify has had that opportunity, other than Lori, and she's going to submit written comments to me.
Great. So I have just a few more questions for you, just in regard to process here. So again, you've indicated that an SSDP would be required for this project because the properties within the shoreline jurisdiction. Have you had a chance to look at the shoreline master program to determine whether this use would be allowed in this shoreline designation? Shoreline environment designation?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any reason to think that it would, that it would not be allowed.
Okay. So my, I guess what I propose to do at this juncture is to, again, leave the record open to allow the city to complete the SEPA review process, including the applicable appeal, appeal period. My understanding is that there would be further permitting required, specifically an SSDP and potentially a shoreline variance, but I don't think that that would preclude me from issuing a decision on the use in this zone. It may be subject to conditions. You know, should I approve it? I am, I have not made a decision on that yet, but should I approve that, it may be subject to conditions that all other required permits must be obtained. So I think as a process matter, that's not going to prevent my review of this. But again, I would like to leave the record open, not to a specific date, but basically to allow the city to complete the SEPA review process. And then the applicable appeal period, at which time, Mr. Reed, if you could forward your threshold determination and any, any other relevant documents related to your environmental review after the appeal period has expired, the record will close at that time. And then my intent would be to issue a decision on this. issue a decision on this request within 10 working days of that date. Is that understood?
Yes, that would be. I apologize for order of operations confusion on this. I, I guess I, I felt without clear guidance as to, you know, which, which authorizations would be required first. I felt like if we didn't have authorization for the outdoor use under the land use code, then it would, then it would negate the necessity of going through all of the environmental permitting processes, which are, seem to be more laborious from, from my department standpoint. So.
Understood. Yeah, I did. I don't know if you had a chance to jot down that particular WAC provision. That's, you know, what's guiding me in, in the order of operations and so that again, if you want to jot that down and just take a look at it, it's WAC 19711055. And then just I guess for, you know, the future, does the city have a consolidated permit process? I'm just a.
No, not really.
Okay, that might be something city council wants to consider. That way, you know, all the information relevant to a particular project could come to me at once. And I think that also, you know, it's more efficient and could provide some cost savings and in which case I do this with a lot of other jurisdictions. I would review, you know, the request for a CUP and a shoreline variance and any other things that come within my purview within one hearing. And then we have a better idea of the total scope of the project. So again, understandable, we'll get through this, but maybe that's something that, you know, city council can consider for future projects. But with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this second matter. Again, the record will be left open for an indeterminate period of time to allow the city to complete the SEPA review process. And that would include the applicable appeal period. So thank you for being here for this second matter. You're welcome to stay if you were here for that matter, but you can leave if you wish. We have one additional matter on the agenda today and Mr. Reed, you can just go ahead and let me know when you're ready and we'll proceed to that third matter.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought he was gonna be here. Do we, do we have Christian Frometh in the gallery yet online? Yeah, your honor, we do not have our biologist representing the applicant currently here.
Hmm. I, I certainly had some questions for Mr. Frometh on this. Do we want to try to get a hold of him, see if he can? See what's going on or what, how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, no, the applicant is trying to make phone contact with him now. May we pause the recording while we try to raise the biologist?
Sure, yeah, and we'll just turn it back on when we're back on the, the record. Yeah, great, thank you. So the last item we have on the agenda today is number SLVAR A request for approval of a shoreline variance or Svar to allow for the development of a single family residence on an approximately 0.18 acre lot located within the shoreline jurisdiction at 737 Peninsula Court Southeast. Specifically, the applicant is requesting the Svar to allow the proposed development to encroach within the 50-foot shoreline setback and within a protected buffer area associated with a category one wetland. In addition, it appears that the applicant is requesting a zoning variance from the 20-foot minimum front yard structural setback requirement to locate the proposed residence further from the shoreline and wetland to minimize impacts. I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a shoreline and wetland report prepared by Aqua Tiera, materials related to the environmental review of the proposal and various notice materials. And I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. With that, Mr. Reed, you are still sworn in and you may begin your presentation when ready.
Okay, thank you, your honor. This is for the Miss Rico. Shoreline variance 2400001. The purpose of this application is to seek relief from the dimensional requirements of table 5-3 of the 2024 City of Ocean Shores Shoreline Master Program. Prescribing a vegetative buffer of 50 feet and a structural setback of 15 feet along Grace Harbor as well as relief from table 2-1 of appendix two of the same document. Prescribing a 225-foot wetland buffer requirement as identified in the wetland rating summary. In addition, a front yard setback variance is being requested as a mitigation measure. The application is for the purpose of constructing a single family residence in the R1 zone. You go by Tom, right? Tom is the applicant, Tom Strickel. P O Box 5010 Kent Washington 98064. The project description is Mr. Rico Vices and Mr. Rico. Yeah, it's, I apologize for, for not pronouncing your name correctly. This is located, this project is located on parcel number 094500106100. Located in Division 21, Block 1 and Lot 61. The site address is 737 Peninsula Court Southeast. Sitting on a 7,766 square foot parcel. Total proposed impacts of zero square feet with mitigation. That doesn't mean there's zero feet of impact. It's that there will be a zero net loss. The existing conditions, the zoning on this parcel is R1 residential 1. The land use is for single family. That's from the Ocean Shores Comprehensive Plan. And it is in the shoreline jurisdiction on a lagoon located on the Eschway Grace Harbor. The surrounding conditions, zoning, all surrounding properties are zoned R1, single family. To the west is a saltwater lagoon. The land use designation to the north, south and east are all single family. To the west again is a saltwater lagoon. The existing land use to the north is a single family residence vacant undeveloped land. To the south, single family residence and to the east, a single family residence. To the west again is the saltwater lagoon. The background, the subject property addressed at 737 Peninsula Court Southeast is located in the southeast corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly 200 feet north to North Bay Avenue Southeast. The property is zoned and is located in the R1 single family zone exclusively. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is exclusively R1 and impacting the lot for a single family dwelling is a permitted use in this district. The parcel was previously cleared and set up as a recreational site impacting the shoreline buffer and structural setback in the past. Non-native species have since propagated in the impacted area. Notice for today's hearing was scheduled for July 10th. Were sent to owners within 300 feet of the subject property on June 7th, 2024 as required by WAC 17327120. The hearing information was also made available at the City of Ocean Shores website. The notice of the public hearing was provided to the Daily World Newspaper for publication in the February 13 and February 15, 2024 additions. Staff has determined that the development project is listed as a permitted use as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020A. Wetland and shoreline vegetative buffers exist on this parcel, which require an approved application of a shoreline variance to impact any shoreline or wetland and its associated buffers. This project proposes to mitigate impacts to the shoreline as well as the wetland buffer is outlined in the proposed mitigation section, starting on page four of the, of the shoreline, no net loss. Habitat Management and Wetland Buffer Mitigation Plans Document. These plans were provided by Aqua Tiera Land and Water Services Incorporated on behalf of the applicant. The purpose of the variance is to allow for the construction of a single family residence in the R1 zone and would allow for minimal use of the property for which it was platted. No grant of special privilege would be perceived through the variance, should the variance be granted. A front yard, a front yard structural setback is being requested as a part of the mitigation measures to further demonstrate the effort of avoidance and minimization to impacts of the critical area. The standard of review for shoreline variances, the following is applicable for all shoreline variances. The purpose of the shoreline variance is strictly limited to granting relief from specific bulk dimensional or performance standards set forth in the shoreline master program and where there are extraordinary or unique circumstances relating to the physical characteristics or configuration of the property. So that strict implementation of the SMP would impose unnecessary hardships on the applicant or thwart the SMC processes as stated in RCW 9058020. B, the construction should be in accordance with this shoreline variance should not begin nor can construction be authorized except for provided in the RCW. C, pursuant to WAC 17327210 and 17327170, the following criteria shall constitute the minimum criteria for review and approval of a shoreline variance. A shoreline variance for development that will be located landward of the ordinary high watermark and/or landward of a wetland as defined in the RCW. It may be authorized, provided the applicant can demonstrate that all of the following. Number one, the strict requirements of bulk dimensional or performance standards set forth in the SMP would preclude or significantly interfere with reasonable use of the property not otherwise prohibited by the SMP. Or number two, the hardship described above is specifically related to the property and is the result of unique conditions such as irregular lot shape, size or natural features and the application of the SMP and not, for example, from deed restrictions or the applicant's own actions. The design of the project will be compatible with other permitted uses within the area and with uses planned for the area under the city's comprehensive plan and shoreline master program and would not cause adverse impacts to the area of the city subject to the SMA. The shoreline variance authorized does not constitute a grant of special privilege not enjoyed by other properties in the area and will be the minimum necessary to afford relief and the public interest will suffer no substantial detrimental effect. D, the shoreline variances for development that would be located either waterward of the ordinary high watermark or in a wetland as defined in RCW 9058032H may be authorized, provided the applicant can demonstrate that all criteria stated above as well as the following. Number one, strict application of the bulk dimensional or performance standards set forth in the SMC would preclude all reasonable use of the property not otherwise prohibited by the SMP and the public rights of navigation and use of the area of the city subject to the SMA would not be adversely affected by the granting of the shoreline variance. And E, in the granting of all shoreline variance approvals, consideration shall be given to the cumulative impact of additional requests or like actions in the area. For example, if shoreline variances were granted to other developments in the area where similar circumstances exist, the total of the variances shall also remain consistent with the policies of the RCW 9058020 and would not cause substantial adverse impacts to the shoreline environment or result in a net loss of ecological functions. Under F, the shoreline variances from the use regulations of the SMC would be, are prohibited. This is provided that is not prohibited. The shoreline administrator may forward recommended conditions to the hearing examiner who may attach conditions to the approval of the variance as necessary to ensure consistency of the proposal with the above, with the above criteria. The decision of the hearing examiner shall be the final decision of the city ecology. Ecology shall be the final authority authorizing a shoreline variance consistent with WAC 17327200. This project seeks to comply with the shoreline master program regulations by applying onsite mitigation measures which will consist of restorative plantings in four different areas within the impacted parcel as well as abatement of all non-native or invasive plant species that have established themselves in the buffer areas. In all appearances, this project implements measures as required by the current SMP and its appendix two to attain a no net loss function. Recommendation, should the hearing examiner approve this development, the planning department recommends conditions as listed in the in addition to any other conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Condition number one from the city or from the planning department would be construction must meet all current planning, zoning, building, construction and fire code requirements. And that it would comply with approved critical area mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to the shoreline and wetland buffer. This plan shall include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during and after construction activities are complete. And then also to comply with any requirements imposed by the Washington State Department of Ecology. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any word from Mr. Frometh? He can call in too, I think that.
Let me give him a call and see what we can get going here.
Hello, folks. Sorry for the delay. I was having real troubles on this end.
No problem, Mr. Frometh. So just to kind of catch you up here. Mr. Reed just completed his presentation of the proposal. So we were gonna turn to questions and as you know, I generally like to have you sworn in so you can provide any clarification. So I don't know if your camera works. If not, I can trust that you're raising your right hand.
I, I am raising the right hand. I'll try and get the camera. I'm on a cell phone right now, so sorry.
No, no problem. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Christian Frometh, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-A-N. Frometh, F as in Frank, R-O-M-U-T-H.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and direct my questions to Mr. Reed, but I have a feeling you're gonna want to chime in pretty quickly because they're technical questions here. So I am looking at what I have in the package at page 35, I think here. Which is the page 34, which is the, the proposed site plan?
Yes.
And I was kind of hoping you could just kind of walk me through what I'm seeing here.
Sure. The property is in, in plan view, it's an irregular shape, not quite rectangular. So tapered, I guess. It's also located on, and it has, it's, has a hill slope included of it. Not a steep one, on parcel, it's not a steep hill slope. But it does influence project layout. The property, the street frontage is to the east and the closest shoreline is to the west. It's a tidal lagoon. It's connected to North Bay, the North Bay proper, but it's a an inlet or slash lagoon off of North Bay. The, the property has, I'm changing screens on a computer here while I talk to, so bear with me just for a second.
No worries.
The uh, the property itself has been cleared in the past. Um, it was cleared and developed um, for an RV site. Um, it has a um, uh, a, a limited driveway, um, and it has the utilities and a parking spot for an RV. Um, the utilities include a, a um, septic, um, uh, water supply and uh, power. And I think there's actually telephone uh, pedestal there onsite. Since the site was, so that's what we've been referring to as prior converted area and it's abbreviated on and delineated on the map uh, with the line type PCA, prior converted area.
And then just real quickly on that, um, so that, that PCA area that it looks like it's uh, a majority of the property apart from the area closest to the ordinary high watermark and then kind of along the small strip along the southern southeast portion of the, the property. Is that correct?
That is, that, that is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then. One moment, then, okay. The proposed um, development area is a uh, is essentially a rectangle. And it has been, well, encumbrances on the property, um, environmental encumbrances. Um, the ordinary high watermark line type OHW to the uh, west, west, southwest, um, flanks, the lagoon. Um, a very small portion of that OHW, ordinary high watermark line eclipses the property. Um, and it's in the lighter, it's a non-shaded area there.
Yeah.
As you proceed inboard from the ordinary high watermark, inboard to the property, you see the PCA line. Um, with a different, in the shaded, uh, a shaded area between PCA and ordinary high watermark is proposed as buffer mitigation area M dash three. Um, M dash three was affected by clearing, um, when the site was, was, well, when it was cleared. Um, a lot of uh, the taller vegetation was removed and new, um, and since the initial clearing, much of the site has colonized with non-native vegetation and some native shrubs and uh, saplings are present, none of them very big. Um, that area M three is proposed as one of the mitigation areas to where it would be enhanced that, that, um, and generically, the enhancements that are proposed in any of the, there are other M, M dash one, M dash two areas and and I'll, I'll pivot slightly here to just say generically, the proposed enhancement on those prior, prior converted, prior cleared areas is removal of non-natives and installation of native vegetation. Uh, trees and um, lower growing trees and uh, shrub species and some native uh, ground cover areas. The um, so that was M three and then proceeding eastward, eastbound, uh, the next shade is a lighter shade color M dash one. Um, it's a shoreline. Uh, oh, sorry, I, I started. Um, the, the environmental encumbrances that I've referenced earlier include overlapping buffers uh, for the shoreline, for wetland and also associated with the shoreline is the fish and wildlife habitat conservation area. Um, the, in total, the hundred percent of the property is encumbered by today, modern uh, time, current buffer sizes. Um, and a small portion of the uh, shoreline itself in the ordinary high watermark. So from a zoning and land use standpoint, the, the property, uh, um, the i- impacts to buffer are unavoidable. Um, so the effort, uh, uh, con- concerted effort was made to minimize the impacts, uh, locate development as far away from the uh, dominant uh, from the, from the uh, wetland and shoreline area. And then to um, mitigate uh, surrounding it and within the prior converted area. And then, and that's the M one, two and three. So, sorry, that's a little uh, backtrack in order to provide context.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Um, so the area M one, um, we, uh, M three was the darker, M one is lighter.
Yeah.
Is um, also closer to the resource shoreline and wetland than the proposed development.
And this is the area. So if I'm understanding this correctly, this light gray area is uh, within the, the shoreline setback and also within the PCA. Is that correct? That's what this light, light gray is.
That is correct. Um, further to the east of the light gray, there is a line type that is SLB shoreline buffer.
And then the dash line, that would be the additional structural setback from that?
Yeah, the, the, the SSB line is, yeah. Um, so, and then the FDS line is what um, we have been utilizing on the ocean shores properties, uh, fire defensible space um, setback from the structure itself. Um, that would be an area um, it, inside of the buffer fence. That, that line is two things. It's the FDS fire defensible space and the BF, which is buffer fence. Um, all, and, and I will, and I'll periodically remind us all that that is all inside the prior converted area. It's all area that was previously cleared for the RV site. Um, so the FDS and the P B F are the buffer fence outside them. Uh, in the interior of the buffer fence area is a landscaped area and the, the developed residential area.
Yeah.
The, as the uh, the home itself in terms of um, efforts to minimize the impacts where uh, the uh, the development area was pushed to the eastern flank, the, the development rectangle or envelope, if you will, pushed to the eastern flank of the property, even to the point where we're requesting a um, partial reduction in the front yard setback in order to retreat the impacts, the, the, the current proposed impacts further from the resource.
Um, and then just real quickly on that, um, and perhaps this is for Mr. Reed. Am I correct that that front yard structural setback, that's a requirement of the zoning code? That's not within the um, shoreline master program requirement or?
Um, yeah, I think, I think I understand that correctly and, and it would be a um, a deviation from the zoning code.
From the zoning.
From the SMP.
And that's something that I would be addressing in my decision.
Yes.
Zoning code. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Frometh, but.
No worries. Thank you. Um, so the, the uh, the rec, within the rectangle, the, the um, the development impacts are uh, a, a home, which is uh, impervious surface and it's a two-story home rather than a spread out uh, ranch style home. Um, and to minimize total footprint, um, no garage and or possibly, uh, I, I'm, I haven't been privy to the actual details of the home design, just its footprint. Um, and one, one possibility, uh, the, the proposal before us today is to re, re, um, confine, restrict the home footprint to as shown on the property there. Um, whether or not a garage is installed on the gra, inside of that footprint as part of the ground floor of the home or not, I, I don't have an answer to. Um, but regardless, it's a two-story structure in order to reduce uh, impervious area and footprint within the buffer. Um, similarly, the driveway was uh, well, this is reduced because the uh, we're requesting a reduction of the front yard setback. So we can leave more space in the rear yard for the uh, buffer area. Um, and I think I'll, maybe I'll just, that might be a good place for me to pause and see if there's any uh, clarifications needed.
No, I think I'm tracking with everything. Um, there was, so all, all mitigation is proposed uh, onsite. There's no compensatory mitigation.
That is correct. Yeah, the um, and the um, calculations, well, they're um, in the, they're summarized in the narrative of the report, but they're also on, in our tables here on the, on the uh, plan view.
Yes, and I, I think I followed all that and particularly as you've walked me through this site plan. I guess the one, there's only, there's, so there is this small area outside of the PCA. I think it was, I can't remember how many square feet. Um, it looks like the, at the eastern the southeastern corner of the lot. Um, that's the only.
I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just asking if that's, that's the only area outside of the PCA that's going to be impacted.
Um, that is area, oh, yeah, there's um, area M four, um, is uh, let's see, uh, one second, my screen just, okay. Um, area M four was not PCA and it's a total of three hundred and forty-eight square feet by our calculations. Um, and it is um, actually uh, proposed to be, it's not, uh, yeah, it's not in the PCA, but it's also um, proposed as uh, to receive vegetative enhancement uh, in that area because I think the uh, non-native species are also present.
Um, and then in, in any case, uh, you've determined that the uh, onsite mitigation um, with the onsite mitigation, this project would result in no net loss of uh, habitat function?
That is correct. Yeah, the um, with the vegetative plantings that would be uh, the removal of the non-native materials, um, and, and old, oh, an old um, uh, human gathering uh, platform associated with the uh, RV usage. There's a uh, a deck, that's what it's called. Sorry. Um, would be removed, the vegetation, the na, non-native vegetation would be, um, I can't, but it, it's very difficult in this industry to promise eradication of non-native vegetation because it is so effective and aggressive. Um, but it would be controlled and diminished and uh, it's, while simultaneously planting native material that has uh, the, the effective strategy there is to uh, foster the native so it then outcompetes and it makes an unwelcome place for the uh, non-native vegetation to reestablish. Um, but yes, that would be done between um, the existing uh, the, the proposed home footprint, which is concentrated in the area that was the uh, RV camping area, the concentrated RV camping area. So the highest disturbance area, which included removal of vegetation and also um, some earthwork uh, historically. Um, and in, in our opinion, the uh, square footage achieved of the mitigation area um, is so significant that it will offset and uh, result in a no net loss of uh, buffer habitat for the resources. And uh, avoid utilization of the mitigation bank credit. So we can do everything onsite, which I believe is uh, identified in the, in code for ocean shores as a preferred option is to try and do everything onsite first.
Thank you, Mr. Frometh. I, I do have some additional questions for Mr. Reed. I uh, appreciate your uh, being here today. I, I think I have a good uh, grasp on the mitigation plan. But Mr. Reed, um, I wanted to direct your attention to the uh, MDNS and uh, SSDP exemption letter that you issued, I believe you issued for this project. Um, and I have that. Let's see here, in my packet at PDF sixty-three. Um, I don't know if this was an incorrect uh, document in the record, but it appears to reference a different project.
I'm not, I'm not able to locate it in my documents at all right now. I have the SEPA checklist.
Uh, it's below this, it's right after the SEPA checklist in my packet. It's got the correct uh, site address, but the um, MDMS conditions appear to reference a uh, Duck Lake. I think there is maybe mention of a dock.
Okay, I'm, I'm not finding that in the documents that I have with me today. Um, and if it's referencing a dock, then it's the wrong document.
Okay. And then the same for the, the, it's all, I think, one document, but the uh, exemption letter uh, also references a, a dock project, but it appears to attach the correct site plan. So I don't know if it's a some issues with maybe using, utilizing an old document and not updating it or, yeah. So uh, I don't know if you, you can, if there's a way you can, can view that because that, that does present another issue for me. Uh.
Is that something that I can uh, provide you after the hearing or?
If you have, if, if you have a correct uh, MDNS, uh, I guess the issue uh, is that you know, th- this project can't comply with conditions that don't, don't address this project. So, uh, what I'm going to do, I, I guess I'm worried that if there's not a correct document, uh, that essentially this determination needs to be withdrawn and reissued. Uh, which uh, is, is allowed under WAC one nine seven eleven three forty. It doesn't, that, that provision doesn't speak directly to withdrawal based on a mistake such as this or. But what I'm going to do is uh, I'm going to leave the record open either for submittal of the correct uh, MDNS or to allow time to, well, I guess I, I'll, I'll turn to you, Mr. Reed, on, on your thoughts. If this, if this, if the MDNS that was issued for this project uh, is referencing the, the wrong project, uh, how would you propose to proceed on that?
I need, I, I'm, I'm going to have to go back and look and see what was submitted uh, in the SEPA checklist and review comments. Uh, uh, I checked with my planner and there were no comments that came back on that, but I need to see what was um, what was submitted.
Okay. So I guess I'll, I'll address that. I'll, I'll, we'll readdress this at the, towards the end of the hearing here. But uh, I think that's all the uh, questions I had for you or Mr. Frometh at this time. Does the city have any other witnesses that want to present on this matter?
And not at this time, Your Honor.
And then, Mr. Frometh, did you have any other comments on this proposal at this time?
Um, no, I uh, nothing that's occurring to me at this moment.
Great, thank you. So I see we have the, the applicant here. If we can go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you want to? Hand him the mic?
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
My name is. Biset, B I S E S. Last name is M E E S R I K U L. That Missy Kun.
How do you pronounce that?
Missy Kun. And now you know why I go by Tom.
Is that, is it all right if I call you Tom?
Please.
Thank you, Tom. So now is your opportunity, if you'd like to provide any additional information about the proposal. To me and members of the public attending today.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thanks for the opportunity to. To submit this, you know, proposed. Plan for the hearing and hopefully one of these year I may get to build my house. Before I pass away because I've been retired. I like to enjoy my retirement in Ocean Shore. So anyway. Thanks a lot. I've not really know much about the process that need to be done. But I'm pretty sure that Christian and Marshall has been. Helpful in getting me. Try to help me achieve my goal of building the house. And I. Just to be here, listen to what going on. I'm totally confused. All I know is that. I, I willing to do whatever it take to build my house and, and I don't think the request that I. Submitted on mitigation plan is unreasonable. And especially when this land was, this plot, this was, you know, clear at one time. Many houses around there that was built almost right in the water. And. As my house, you know, is being required to, my proposed plan required to be so far away from the shoreline. And when I turned around, look at my next door neighbor, their house is. In the water. So, and I, I understand because there was a grandfather in, you know, they built the house longer. You know, so, but anyway, that, that's just my. Personal feeling as per public, you know. Concern that, gee, why can't I build my house when that guy can build his? That's all. And.
Thank you.
Has been helpful and working with me. So anyway, that's all the comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I just, are you aware that? I am not the final permitting authority and that DOE has the actual. Final permitting authority on shoreline variances.
I, I am, yes, but. I'm just, this is the only chance I have to voice my opinion on my feeling about the shoreline requirement. So.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, I wanted to advise you of that. That's all.
I, I understand. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, so generally with, you know, should I approve this? I generally include a condition that basically. That the applicant cannot begin site disturbance until twenty-one days of filing. Or until all review proceedings initiated by DOE during that twenty-one day period has commenced. Do you see any issue with that, Mr. Reed?
Uh, no, I don't.
And then. Great. Are there any other members of the applicant team that want to testify today?
Nope, not that we're aware of.
Great. So let's, let's turn to, see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter. Ms. Piera, you are sworn in, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I support this project conceptually. I just want to remind the court that the twenty twenty-four. Stormwater manual would apply in this case and also if staff could make public. Excuse me, if staff could make available the additional documents that are going to be coming into the public. If they could, or excuse me, to, for the record, the. Determination of mitigated significance or any other documents that you're requesting, if you could have. Staff post them publicly. Is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Piera. Are there, is, does Laura Caldwell want to comment on this? Last matter? If you need to utilize the chat to, to let me know. Go ahead and do so. We'll figure it out.
I think Laura was able to unmute a little while ago. So Laura, if you'd like to comment, go ahead and unmute and. Or let us know.
Hopefully we didn't put anyone to sleep with all our.
That's entirely possible. It's been a complicated day.
Well, Mr. Reed, is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this last matter?
Yes, we have a member of the public here in the room that would like to testify.
Great.
You need to speak.
Hello.
There you go.
Hello there. If you can go ahead and raise your right hand, I'd like to get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Stephen Clymer. S T E P H E N. C L Y M E R.
Thank you.
Okay. I, in general, support this. Concept revision that we stayed so long was. I wanted, I was a little bit concerned about the setback. From the, the water particularly because. I live across the street. And I've met Tom and his wife. They seem like very wonderful people. Be a pleasure to have them in the cul-de-sac. But the law, those of us that have been on the water there. Have been drug through a lot of keyholes over the years. On everything we've ever done on the property. And so, while I'm sympathetic to you, Tom. I, it's a fact of life. And if you ever go to do something later, it's going to be there again. But anyway. In the simplest terms. What I see is this thing is a rectangle house. Kind of in the middle of the lot. That, that you're giving up some frontage on the road. So you could maintain a setback in the back. And that's why I support it because the lot directly across, next to us across the street. Is for sale. And I want to be sure that that guy can't point to. You and say, hey, he got a variance. I'm on a variance. That's, that's kind of why I'm here. I. Do appreciate. All the work you guys have to go through. But it's, it's, it's worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Reed, is there anyone else in the room that wants to testify on this final matter?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, great. So I guess we'll turn back to you if you want to provide any response to the comments we've heard here today.
Uh, no, not, other than, I guess to, to elaborate a little bit on the need for variances in these shoreline developments. That is the process. All of these parcels that are surrounding this. This lagoon and the rest of Ocean Shores and the incorporated city limits. Were all plotted for a, a minimum of a single-family residential structure. And in cases where we have environmental encumbrances that. That cover the parcels either partially or completely. It was as long as it's no fault of the owner and it's natural. Their, their natural anomalies that present themselves on the parcel. This variance process is the process used. To work in and around the, the natural areas and the buffers. So. Just wanted to kind of elaborate on that a little bit that. You know, we're not, we're not trying to create more parcels to develop. These were already created. With the intent to develop for at least a single-family residence.
Great, thank you. And does the applicant have any response to the comments we've heard from members of the public?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I'll, I'll turn back to you, Mr. Reed. I just need to resolve this. MDNS issue. I guess my proposal would be to leave the record open. To allow you to either submit. The correct MDNS or indicate whether you would be withdrawing the MDNS and issuing a new one. In which case the record would be left open to allow you to do so and include the applicable SEPA appeal period. Again, the issue I have is if the MDNS is addressing. An incorrect project, it just, it creates issues. I don't know how the applicant could comply with. Mitigation measures that are irrelevant to the project. So. As I mentioned. You may want to jot it down in case it does come up, in case this. You don't have a correct MDNS that I haven't received that WAC. One nine seven eleven three forty. Contains provisions that allow the SEPA responsible official to withdraw a threshold determination. So. Yeah, again, so that's my proposal, that the record be left open to either submit the correct MDNS or to. Indicate whether you'll be withdrawing and issuing a new MDNS. Is. Are you tracking with that, Mr. Reed? Do you have any?
Yep, absolutely. And I, yeah, no, I'm tracking with what's going on here and. And I apologize. I'm a little frustrated.
No worries. I just want to make sure we get this correct and don't create problems down the line. So.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay. Great. And then I think we addressed all of that. So with that, again, I thank everyone for being here. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn. This final matter. Again, I'll be leaving the record open for that MDNS clarification or potential reissue. And then it will be my intent to issue a decision. Within ten business days of the record actually closing. Thanks again for being here. We had some technical issues, but we got through it and we hope everyone has a pleasant afternoon. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everybody.